Longview Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for July 19, 2016 will now come to order. We'll begin with our invocation. Commissioners?
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we ask that this evening you bless our country, bless our city, protect us over our country and our -- we need it right now. We need your blessings. So bless us, bless us as commissioners, bless our city, let us all make the right decisions that better our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I'd like to do is welcome our two new commissioners, our retired police chief, Don Dingler, and Tim Carpenter.
Thank you.
To the commission and looking forward to having you guys with us and help us make this place a better place to live. Amen? Amen. All right. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from June 21st. Are there any corrections or additions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve minutes as read.
A second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes of the June 21st meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Our next item would be to approve the consent agenda. I'm going to read the disclaimers for those. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. When we move to the regular agenda, the purpose of this meeting will be to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be: the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order: the applicant, staff, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the requests. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed. No further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the requests. Zoning request and the Planning-Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which be conducted by the City Council on August 11, 2016. Okay. Okay, we have no... Yes, we have one item on the consent agenda. Sorry, got my papers kind of mixed up here. On the consent agenda, if you will, please.
Consider application PA 1609 filed by Cotton-Moseley LTD to plat approximately 3.133 acres of Village LeMans, Unit 2, located east of HG Mosley Parkway and south of Cotton Street.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Move the second to approve the consent agenda item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item PA 1609 is approved. We'll move to our regular agenda. Thank you.
A public hearing will be held to consider application S 1602 filed by Kelly Sims requesting a specific use permit to allow for a barber or beauty shop in office zoning district for lot 7, New City Block 29 of the Longview McNutt acreage located at 913 Judson Road.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward and tell us about your application.
We just wanted to get a special use permit. It's open up the salon, 913 Judson Road. We're interested in that building because of the type of building that it is. It's mid-century modern. I think it would make a great salon.
Okay. Any commissioners have questions at this time?
I'm just curious as to parking for that particular building.
I'm looking to have four to five girls in there working with me. There's 10 available parking in the back behind the building next to it, and there's five that open up front. And also, the building next to it is owned by the same person, so those parking up front could be shared also.
909.
909 Judson, the one next door.
Parking shared. They'll park in the back and walk around that other business?
Yes, sir.
And also, per the survey that was provided by the owner, these parking spaces are accurate. These parking spaces actually do belong to this location here.
Number of spaces for all those businesses are adequate?
Yes, sir. We did the calculations.
Any additional questions for the applicant? If not, we'll have staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit, SUP, for a barber or beauty shop in office zoning district. A specific use permit is required for this type of use within office zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Judson Road is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for these types of uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff?
Mrs. Sims, will you be observing regular hours?
Yes, ma'am.
The customary hours of the beauty?
Monday through Saturday, closed on Sunday.
Daytime?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions?
It says residential on the west side.
Across, it's across from High on Harvard.
Okay.
Go back to this map.
Again, why would we have to ask for an SUP?
Because barber shop or beauty shop is not allowed by right in office zoning. It's not a real office-type use, but they do realize that it could be... It's not a retail-type use either. It's kind of a service-type use, and so in office zoning, they require a specific use permit, so no... To ensure no negative impact on adjacent residential. Which, you go back... Sorry, my mouse isn't working that great, but you can see the SF 5 along Harvard on the west side of High Street. There is some residential on that side.
Okay. There be no other questions for the applicant and staff at this time? You may be seated.
Thank you.
We'll now open up the public hearing for application S 16-02. Anyone present wish to come and speak in support of this application?
In support?
Yes. Your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Sewell. I am an employee of the owner of the building. My home address is 3820 Fern Ridge here in Longview, 75605. And I just wanted to come and state we're for Kelly getting her salon. The parking, as far as we're concerned, has never really been an issue with customers, our customers coming up in parking. We did have some issues with the gentleman next door who didn't want anyone to park in his parking lot. It was never a capacity issue, as opposed to our customers just would accidentally pull in and park to come in and do their business. We did our best to kind of keep them from parking. If they were in there, we would ask them to move, so I just wanted to state that. We're for Kelly getting her salon. Thank you.
Any other in support? Anyone present coming and speaking in opposition to this application? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Mitch Motley. My address is 1127 Judson Road, Suite 211, Longview, Texas 75601. I'm here on behalf of the owner of that adjacent property, Mr. James Davis. He has an accounting practice that is due north of the property in question.
Is that the location you're referring to?
This one right here? It's right here?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I have to disagree that there has been no parking issues ever since the current owners purchased the property back in 2014, I believe, there have been parking issues. It may be true that there are some additional parking places back behind that are available to be used by the customers of this building. The fact is, in a great degree, they don't take that opportunity. What they do is pull into my client's parking area until they're asked to leave, and as I understand the situation, at times, they have been asked to leave and they did not leave. Not only is it a parking issue, people parking in the lot that they should not be parking on, in our opinion, it has been a safety issue, and that issue is going to increase due to this proposed transfer of views from a small insurance agency to a beauty shop. I may have misunderstood, but I thought that there were going to be five employees working there, and I assume there will be three or four or five, hopefully, customers there from the owner's perspective. I don't know where all these vehicles are going to go. There are four perpendicular parking spaces directly in front of the building that front on Judson Road. What you have to do is, if you use those parking spaces, is to back out on Judson Road. This is a very dangerous section to be backing out. So what the people have done, they've... Some of them have parked behind. And we're talking about these parking places back here, I guess, that are walking through this way, down the sidewalk, into the building here. What they typically done is just pull into my client's parking spot. And I don't know... I don't know how to deal with that issue. What I have taken some photographs here. Of course, you've got a pretty good idea of the layout there. We had asked at one point that the owner of the building put some type of signage out there that would basically tell people, "Do not park here. It's not your area. If you want to park at our building, you've got four spots in front, or you can go back behind." I don't know if this photograph would be of interest to anyone, but what was put in place after we made that suggestion was a small blue sign.
We're not really getting you if you're not at the microphone.
They got to get the microphone for you.
So we either give you one, give you a mic, or do you want to keep your direct?
I'll try to stay put. I'll try to stay put.
That's fine. It's just that if you walk up or wait...
But it's a two-pronged issue. First, we have people parking on my client's property who are not authorized to park there and who, at times, have been asked to leave, and they've refused to leave. I understand that there is a procedure where you can purchase certain signs and put on your property and put warnings and so forth, where if people do park on your property, that you can have them towed, but it's not just a matter of picking up the telephone. It's an expensive, rather involved procedure. That is one issue. We have the people parking on our property that are not authorized to park there. The second issue, and I think it's probably more important from the city's perspective, is the safety issue. I took... I've got several pictures here today. I walked across the street from this area and took several pictures back across Judson Road that depict Mr. Davis's property, as well as the property that's subject of this application. It's might near impossible to be able to shoot a photograph across Judson Road without getting a car traveling. I mean, the traffic around there is tough. And to me, you're going to compound the problems that my client has incurred in the past if you allow this specific use permit, because we're going from a small insurance agency to a public business that is asking the public, "Come in, let us do your hair, your nails, whatever." And I know, because I'm married, I don't have any hair to worry about, but my wife, when she goes to get these things done, sometimes it takes a while. So we're not talking about just a five-minute run in and run back out. We're talking about hours. I don't believe it is fair to my client to continue to suffer from people using his parking place who are not authorized, plus, I believe it's going to increase the danger to the extent people use those four parking spots out front. They aren't used very often, based on my experience. But we're here to ask that the commission deny the special... the specific use permit for those reasons.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any dialogue with the lady that's willing to put in the...
Mr. Dingler, we've had a couple of years' dialogue with the owner of the property to no avail. I mean, we didn't know who was coming in. We know that a month or so ago, they put up a "for lease" sign on the facility. But the dialogue that we've had with the owner of the property has been extremely unsatisfactory. I mean...
But as I understand it, you've had no dialogue with the Ms. Sims?
That's absolutely...
So you do not know that an all-state agency which moved to another facility on McCann Road, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is going to generate more or less traffic than a hair salon?
Yeah. To me, there will be more traffic from a hair salon. That's just off the top of my head. I mean, because I've got an insurance agent, and I occasionally go through there, but it's usually a very quick stop.
But I thought you just reported that, based on your personal experience, the stops were longer, so that would not be...
No, 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 no. The stops are going to be longer for the hairdressing.
So that would be less in and out than an insurance application?
Yes, but when you...
So just stopping to pay a bill?
Right. It'll be much longer, in my view, getting your hair done.
Thank you, Mr. Mot.
I simply wanted to ask, how many total parking places are there, spaces for this particular property? What's the total count?
I believe in the four, and there's four in the front, I believe. Is that correct? Along Judson Road, and then... I'm sorry, my mouse is not working, but if you can see along High Street, there's four other parking spaces. They're actually on the property. Now, they have to access the other property to get to it, but technically, on the survey that you'll have on the packet, that's in your packet, they actually own across that creek, and they own... Where that green line is, they own those four other spaces in the back along High.
So four in the front and four in the back?
And four in the back.
Is that what you're saying? A total of eight?
Mm-hmm. Well, but they have...
Let me close the public hearing. We'll deal with staff. Mr. Mot?
Yes, and they have shared use of all the parking also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. There be anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. The public hearing on this application is now closed. Now, we can discuss with staff if you wish.
Is there a total of 12 parking spaces?
Yes, I believe there's a total... There's four right here, and I believe, if I can get my mouse to work, there's about... Yeah.
What's required?
There's a few over here. What's required is one parking space for every 200 square feet, and I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I didn't do the calculations on the... in the staff report, but off the... On the top, when we calculated it out, they had enough parking for the beauty salon, which is 100 to 200, based on the parking count, and then for the office right next to it was 100 to 300. And what the old all-state office used to be is 100 to 300.
And they have shared use of this entire parking lot as well, so...
Yeah.
It's a combination of all three buildings and all of this parking. It's not just what's on their property.
Property.
Now, Mr. Davis's business is up to the north there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How many parking places does he have?
I'm not sure how many parking spaces Mr. Davis has.
But there are none between his office and that building right there that you had the pointer on?
Yeah, there are. There's parking along this road right here that are directly adjacent to this building.
Okay.
And I believe those are the ones that people are parking in and don't have permission.
And there is no access from the backside, correct?
That is correct. They have access on High Street. There's actually a driveway entrance on High Street.
Would fencing help the situation from people that would come through on that side if there was a fence up?
I mean, there's a possibility they'd have to...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, see that parking, the adjacent parking lot?
But I don't... I think they're actually probably going through his driveway onto his property, not actually... Yeah.
Yeah, they're parking along this area right here and just walking across. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
They're just parking along this area and then just going in the building there.
Well, staff, it seems to me that we've got a situation here where the applicant's application actually meets the requirements of the city.
That's correct.
In relation to parking.
Yes, sir.
However, we have more of a nuisance kind of a problem here with parking. I know we had the same thing with the big steakhouse at one time, and I saw a bunch of "do not park" signs. Kind of solved that problem. Is... Were the "do not park" signs, some big ones, placed in the right place or something? Could that solve the problem?
That could if the applicant would furnish those signs and install those signs. The ones in front of the steakhouse were in the right of way, and the city actually installed those signs.
Right.
And I think that was something that the gentleman said that they would like to see, but it's a matter of who's responsible for installing those. You know, I don't know that the adjacent property's going to want to spend money on signs for somebody else's property. Kind of see where they're coming from. They don't want to spend money on signs to fix a problem that somebody else has created, but at the same time, when you have that private property issue, sometimes it's your responsibility to kind of put up the signs.
Applicant, are you amenable to placing some signs?
I'm not, I'm probably not.
Okay. And we can make that a part of your SUP?
We haven't dealt with him personally.
Okay.
We've dealt with the other. I don't have a problem with putting up signs.
Come up to the podium. They can't hear you on...
My wife and I would be more than... That would not be an issue at all for us to put signs on the side of the building, and any client that would... is on their way as soon as we open, if this all goes through, we would be sure to let them know, "Do not park on this area. Park either in the front or the 10 additional in the rear." We would definitely let them know. We would put the signs up. We would do anything we could do to not create an issue, because we don't... We're not wanting an issue with people.
Understood.
The difference between the all-state and hairdressing is, is I have a personal relationship. I contact all my clients before they come, if I were to move anyway, and I shoot out reminder texts, so I could shoot out a reminder text anyway.
Okay.
So I really don't see it being a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This being an SUP, can we not somehow include that and staff work with them to do what we would consider to be reasonable and not excessive?
Yes.
That's possible?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
The other tenant across the creek here, is that US Title, the other building?
No, I think US Title's further north. Yeah, they're right up to the north, if you could...
So some of those spots belong to US Title against that property line, that green line?
Uh-huh. Right here.
So you're talking about, what, 20 or more spots there? You would have a... Pardon? There'd be a sign for each spot? I mean, do we need to... I just don't see it appropriate for somebody else to put signs on the other property. I don't know.
Well, we're not talking about putting it on the other property. We're talking about putting it at the applicant's property, indicating the parking for them...
Oh, okay.
That this is the provided parking for their facility. Do not park in other places. They would do that. They wouldn't go over and put it on the other people's property.
Yeah, I think probably what we could do, just trying to think from a practical standpoint and from an enforceability, you know, if they... If we had them put a sign on their property that said, you know, whatever their company name, parking over here and back here, if there continued to be a problem, then I think it would be the other property owner's responsibility to put up the appropriate signs for the towing and so for the formal enforcement action, because I think there, you know, there's some things that they can do, legal rights that they have. But I think, you know, we can put up... Ask them as a condition, if you choose, you know, to put up some of those kind of more informational-type signs.
And, you know, it... You know, it would seem to me, Commissioner, what we're talking about here is we're talking about the applicant being willing to try to do some things to be a good neighbor, because by right, they've already got enough parking spaces, you know, according to city code. They've got what they need. So by them putting up signs, they're just trying to be a good neighbor, as I see it. And that's the good thing about an SUP. We can stipulate those kind of things and make it happen, so.
So I think it really does need to be stipulated. I really do appreciate the applicant being willing to do some signage. My family happens to own some real estate. We have an insurance agent, and we have a hair salon. The hair salon has 10 times as many cars... That's probably an exaggeration. Five or seven times as many cars at any one point as an insurance agency. So I do think that this is a founded request by the adjacent owner, but I like the fact that the applicant is willing to make concessions. So if we can put that in the SUP, I'll vote for it.
I think we've already gotten your input that you would put it in.
Well, I just wanted to...
Well, we... Let us move on, if you will. I think we're where we need to be with it, unless the commission asks. If there are any other questions, we'll entertain... You know, it's closed. He can't talk anymore. If there be no more questions from the commission, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Move to approve with the addition of stating in there the signage.
Will you come in?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I need a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that the application be approved with the additional signage for parking on the SUP. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show that the application stands approved with one note. All right. Okay. Ms. Joy?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 1608 filed by J. Longview Hospitality LLC, requesting to amend PD 1514 to revise the site plan to allow for additional building square footage, amend parking counts, and number of driveways for hotel located at 1125 East Hawkins Parkway. amend parking counts, and number of driveways for hotel located at 1125 East Hawkins Parkway.
Is applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward. Give us your name and address.
My name is A.J. Patel. Address is 908 East Hawkins Parkway.
Tell us about your application here.
I think we're here second time. The square footage of the building has increased. The previous design was a Gen 5 design. Marriott came out with a new design called a Gen 6, and the square foot from 59,000 to roughly close to 64,000. And the shape of the building has changed a little bit.
Okay. Can we go ahead and get the staff report, and I think that'll help clear up.
Yes, sir. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 1514 to revise the site plan. The original site plan proposed a four-story hotel, which is still the same. But it was approximately about, what Mr. Patel had said, about 59,000, 58,000. The new square footage is about 63,725 square feet, which is approximately 5,725 square feet larger than the previously approved PD. There was 142 parking spaces on the previously approved site plan that showed, the previously approved site plan showed 157 parking spaces. He is now proposing 142 parking spaces. Both site plans did show more parking than what was required by code. The applicant has added an additional driveway, if my mouse will work, located right here for fire department access. Signage setbacks landscaping requirements will remain the same from the previously approved PD site plan, and through the development process, the applicant will meet all other City of Longview codes. The applicant previously submitted this plan development that was approved by council in 2015. The PD site plan has changed, therefore, plan development, site plan must be approved by planning, zoning, and city council. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. I also want to, one more additional item. I do want to note that this drive hall also has changed. It was previously along this access, and then the parking was along the building, and it's been flip-flopped for fire code to meet fire code requirements.
Questions for staff or the applicant?
Angela, I also want to give clarification. Where's the footage being added? Because other than moving the parking spaces on the other side, the building looks pretty close to same with it, with moving the entrance in a little bit, right?
I think the, the square, yeah, I think they added a, they added a few more rooms, I believe. Is that what?
That is correct. I think previous was 100 room, and now it's 104 rooms.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No other questions. You may be seated.
Thank you.
We'll have the public hearing on application PD 16-08. Anyone present wish to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have discussion? If not, we ready for a motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application PD 16-08. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Application PD 16-08 stands approved.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider M 1603, amending the City of Longview Future Lane Use Map from Parks and Open Space to Retail located on northwest corner of Hawkins Parkway and Eastman Road.
Is this a staff?
Yes, sir, it is.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. The Future Lane Use Map is, as you all know, intended to serve as a guide in establishing appropriate mixes and intensities of lane use throughout the city. It is not intended of the Future Lane Use Map to identify exact uses on parcel-by-parcel basis. Furthermore, it is not a zoning map. However, it does have a close relationship with the zoning map in, in that it is used in part to determine appropriateness of zoning requests. The Future Lane Use Map must remain flexible by being changed and updated to meet both new policies and changes in development trends and patterns. The Planning Department is requesting to reclassify the area at the northwest corner of Hawkins Parkway and Eastman Road, also known as Hensley Park, from Parks and Open Space to Retail. In November 2015, an election was held, and citizens of Longview voted to remove the park designation of Hensley Park. Due to this, staff is recommending an amendment to the Future Lane Use Map to Retail. As you can see on the Future Lane Use Map, Retail does surround this property, and therefore, it is appropriate to amend the map. Eastman Road is a principal arterial roadway, and Hawkins is a minor arterial roadway as classified under the Highway Functional Classification Systems and are appropriate for retail-type uses. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I was gonna say, this is just a normal process, the next step, from what we elect, what we voted for to undesignate the parks. This just gets us started to the proposed entity that wanted to come in, is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is the next step.
Will there have to be sidewalks in relation to this? Is this, is it, at this point, can we bring that up as front sample?
Well, this is just the Future Lane Use Map. This is not the zoning, so, yeah, it's more, yeah, yeah.
As I understand it, what we're doing basically is bringing the Future Land Use Map in compliance with the results of the election.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that's really, we're just changing what's on the map at this point, not approving anything to go in. Okay? Any other questions?
Staff question.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
That parcel of property can have just that small of a retainage pond? Where's all that water?
Well, this is the Future Lane Use Map. I think you've, you've skipped over to the zoning change. We're right at the, we're at the Future Lane Use Map amendment right now.
But I mean, that, what we're taking it to, that still has to meet city engineering and all of those other.
Yes, sir. Through the development process, our city engineer will look at every, everything.
Yeah, this is not zoning. This is not zoning. This is just strictly changing the designation of what can go on the map.
Yes.
Because of the election, the elec, because the election couldn't change it. We have to change it. But the election is telling us, we got to change it. Does that make sense?
So it operated as Hensley under agriculture?
No, as parks, well, for the zoning, it was agricultural. But for the Future Land Use Map, if we look back, if we look back, it was Parks and Open Space, which is, Parks and Open Space is Parks and Open Space. So it is Hensley Park, so it was appropriate for that time. But now that, with the election results, you know, Retail is the appropriate type use. Or type designation.
Okay. Do we need a public hearing for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll now open up the public hearing for application M 16-03. Anyone present wishing to speak in support, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. There being none, public hearing for application M 16-03 is now closed. If there be, is there any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? So I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve application M 16-03. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? M 16-03 stands approved.
A public hearing will be held to consider PD 16-09 filed by the City of Longview, requesting a rezone of approximately 38 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain Survey tract 11, section 4, from agricultural to planned development, general retail, located at the northwest intersection of Eastman Road and Hawkins Parkway.
Applicant present, please come forward. Applicant not present, sitting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, the City of Longview is requesting to rezone what is known as Hensley Park. As previously stated, the city held an election in November 2015 to remove the park designation to ensure proper development occurs on this site. The City of Longview is proposing to rezone this property to planned development. The planned development, site plan proposes a list of permitted general retail uses as seen in your staff report. The maximum square footage of the total building area, that's all of the, all of the scene in red, is 425,000 square feet with a single tenant maximum of 130,000 square feet. Building height shall not exceed two stories and not exceed 50 feet in height, including unoccupied architectural elements. The front building setbacks will be 50 feet along Eastman Road as well as 25 feet along Hawkins Parkway and 4th Street, with rear setbacks of 25 feet along the west property line. For any out parcel, the setbacks will be 50 feet along Eastman Road, 25 along Hawkins, five on the interior side, and 10 in the rear. Signage for the proposed development will be two pylon signs along Eastman Road to be shared by all the tenants of the development. Two pylon signs will not exceed 40 feet in height or 400 square feet in size, and will have a maximum 15-foot setback. One pylon sign will be allowed along Hawkins Parkway that will be shared also by all the tenants. This pylon sign will not exceed 35 feet in height, 300 square feet in size, with a minimum setback of 15 feet. Monument signs will be allowed for each out parcel and not to exceed 12 feet in height, 150 square feet in size, and will have a 15-foot setback as well. If a monument sign is shared by two out parcels, they will be allowed to have a 15-foot tall monument sign with 225 square feet and 15-foot setback. The development will have a green belt traversing along Eastman Road with a 30-foot wide, will be 30 feet wide at minimum. This green belt will traverse what is known as the, I believe, Blue Night Pipeline that is along Eastman Road. One landscape island will be required for every 25 parking spaces. Landscape islands will be, will be allowed to be grouped as long as there are no more than 40 parking spaces in a row. Each island will be at least 150 square feet in size, and every effort will be made for each parcel to have at least 10% landscaping. However, the whole site will meet the 10% landscape at a minimum that's required by code. The developer will meet all of the other City of Longview landscape requirements, and will also make every effort to save existing trees. Within this greenbelt area that we've discussed along Eastman Road, there will be an eight-foot wide pedestrian path that will connect to the pond on the site. The path will be constructed of a combination of decomposed crushed granite and concrete. The retention pond that will be provided will meet the City of Longview codes, FEMA, and all other codes. Also provided will be a courtyard patio area that will include public space, tables, and landscaping. For this whole development, the parking ratio will be one parking space for every 225 square feet of gross floor area. There will be shared parking and access across the whole development. Traditionally, traditionally, planned developments are site plan specific. However, to ensure that development occurs properly on this sensitive site, staff felt that the planned development was the most appropriate way to accomplish that. Staff has attempted to make these guidelines as flexible without compromising development standards within our community. As development occurs on this site, the developer will not be, be required to submit amendment to the planned development as long as they meet the guidelines set forth in this planned development. Besides the guidelines within this planned development, the development must meet all other applicable City of Longview codes. Eastman Road is a principal arterial, and Hawkins is a minor arterial, which is appropriate for retail-type uses as long as access management is followed. Driveways on this site plan are only graphical representations for this zoning case. Traffic signals, driveways, and the locations of all will be determined by the traffic impact analysis approved by the city engineer in text dot. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff?
So Angela, the two named businesses are Academy and Kroger.
Yes, ma'am.
And is Academy moving from its existing location over?
To be determined. And I think in the presentation that the developers who are proposing this, that's kind of what they alluded to. And we've been working with the information that they provided at that time to ensure that what they told the voters that they were gonna do, we're ensuring that they follow through with that. Because this, as you may not be aware, is, is a process because we will have to sell the property to the Cargill family as part of the agreements that we had when we took ownership of it. And the family will have to sell the property to any third-party developer. Part of that, there'll be a multi-party agreement because they'll have to build us a new park before we sell it to Mr. Cargill, before he can sell it to the developers. So it's a long process and, but we're just trying to get ahead of the curve. And we've been working with documents that their design professional has prepared for them and kind of asking him to prepare documents for us based on what they said they were gonna do. And that's what they put on there. So this is for representation only, you know, it's, it's not gonna confirm anything, but that's what they gave us. To show what could happen there.
Okay, and in terms of signage, there's only gonna be allowed one tall sign that's up in the air? Is that how I'm reading this? The rest are monument?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be three pylon signs, two along Eastman Road and one along Hawkins. And then all the out parcels will be allowed monument signs.
What is the, what is the linear feet along 259 of that?
And that's very similar to what is across the street at Target as well. They have, you know, monument signs at the restaurants and the out parcels, and then they've got strategically located pylon signs that they all share.
Am I to understand we don't current, that there isn't currently a developer? The city is seeing we're the developer?
No. There is a potential developer.
But there is not a developer?
It, so SDI Realty is the one that presented this to the city council for consideration and said that if all the multi-party agreements could be arranged, that's who we're gonna contract, or who we're gonna make an agreement with to build the park. They have agreements with Mr. Cargill, you know, there's what ifs, you know, what if that doesn't happen? But they will be part of a multi-party agreement to build a city park that will turn the domino to allow us to sell the park to Mr. Cargill. I believe they have an agreement to buy it from Mr. Cargill. So that is who the potential developer is, but that, you know, that can all change in time.
What we're looking at here can change.
We're setting the stage because based on the, the election, this is what was presented. That's what the citizens said. If they do something like this, we're okay taking that designation off. So we're gonna hold whoever the developer is, because I mean, there, you could what if it, it, we could get a new park, Mr. Cargill's deal with SDI could fall through, and whoever the developer is, we're gonna hold them to this. If they choose not to do this, and they have to come back in and rezone it, but as long as they meet the parameters of this, then we'll still have the oversight, and we'll hold them accountable to what the citizens okayed for that, that park property.
No, we're gonna have to come back here as long as they meet these restrictions.
Correct. That's correct.
We've tried to craft the PD of what, on behalf of the citizens, but giving them the flexibility to where as long as they build within those buildable areas, they don't have to continue. Because right now, the only thing they really know is, you know, they've announced that it's a, or not a Target, but a Kroger that's coming. But beyond that, you know, so we've tried to, you know, these really aren't representative of buildings. This is building envelopes. So, you know, there could be many more buildings than that that are separate, or there could be more continuous buildings. But in, you know, as long as they stay within the guidelines, we tried to build as much flexibility in there while still maintaining the appropriate controls and oversight.
May I ask, there is, you're proposing a 50-foot setback from 259?
Mm-hmm.
And then you're also saying that there will be a green belt of 30 feet?
Yes, that's included inside that. Yes, that's included inside that, that thirty-foot and then the, and so it would be a twenty-foot from that green belt. So, from the, from the property line because their property.
How does that compare to across the street? How, what is their set, setback on that development to the east?
Oh, their setback is probably fairly, well, I mean, for the out parcels, probably not.
It's probably more than that.
Much more.
But from Target, yes, it's probably much more, but, uh, the out parcels, um...
Because they've got two rows of parking and a driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And then a sidewalk, so it's probably sixty feet.
Yeah. About, yeah, sixty foot, sixty-two, yeah.
Before you get to their green belt? Or does that include the green belt?
They don't have, they don't have a green belt. On the other side of the street, that, that development does not have a green belt.
They've, they've got...
They've got the elevation change.
Yes.
Yeah, they've got a significant amount of state right-of-way.
Right away.
And they've got, I think there's like, I think they have like five feet, five or, five or so feet.
Yeah.
From where their property line to the parking lot start.
Property line, yeah.
Probably going to be where the big white wall's built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most likely it's going to be right in that vicinity.
Mm-hmm.
So we think that Eastman Road, twenty years from now, has to go to six lanes. There's property there on the east side for that expansion?
Not significantly. There's more on the east than on the west, but it's a fifty-foot setback from a busy two fifty-nine.
Plus, they're going to have a problem with on the west side being that there's blue pipeline going through there where they don't have that on the other side.
Yeah, and, and this plan takes into account that pipeline being relocated.
It will also reflect, wouldn't the text dot have some representation on what you had to do for setback? They had, don't they have requirements already in place?
No, when we start looking at setbacks wherever the property line and the right-of-way line from that point back, and that's why we have setbacks is to protect that, but in this location, we have a significant amount of right-of-way and, and I don't believe the road is centered in that right-of-way, but there's a significant amount there.
Mm-hmm.
I guess the thing that kind of concerns me about this is, we're talking about a PD and we're talking about a PD that's going to be based on parameters. PD normally has more specifics than parameters, and if they stay within the parameters, and I'm not sure, the only parameter I see is one hundred and thirty thousand square foot tenant. And I guess that's what's concerning, I mean, that we don't have to look at this again if they are within these quote-unquote parameters, and I don't know what the parameters are. I mean, it, I mean, the whole nature of a PD is it tells us what's going to happen, right?
Yes, as far as, um, varying from our generic zoning requirements for building setbacks, bulk requirements, height, signage, and parking ratios. And so what we've tried to do in the, with this, and this is kind of a graphical representation of what that will transcend to, is it's not going to vary much from this. The only flexibility that we're going to allow is the, the actual building placement in the PD like we just saw, we've amended that thing three times.
Exactly.
And what we're trying to do is prevent that because honestly, the purpose for that PD was really to ensure that we had the right mix of uses and, and fit the, the setbacks in parking, they're meeting all of our minimums, but because it was restrictive in the PD sense, every time they made a change with square footage and so forth, we had to come back. So we're using that as an example of trying to build a little more flexibility. I mean, worst-case scenario, it'll look like that, it'll be, that'll be your full build-out areas, you'll have the maximum square footage, uh, that, and forgive me, I don't have it memorized, that, that's in the staff report. Uh, the parking ratio, it won't be any worse than that, and that's, I don't think that's their intention, but that's what that property will support while still giving us the controls of landscaping and signage because really, when you start looking at appropriate development controls that I think our community is demanding, it's pedestrian accessibility, which we've provided with pedestrian paths and sidewalks, the open space which is, uh, provided, and then the landscape requirements which, which we've outlined.
Well, I think there's also some concern about mixes of uses.
Mm-hmm, and we've gone in and specifically detailed that mix of uses beyond just everything allowed in general retail. So we've tried to account...
We've got a pretty good list here.
Sure, and we try to look at what's appropriate in, in this location.
Michael, on, uh, in the building in two-point-oh, it talks about four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet maximum building?
Mm-hmm.
And no one building being more than a hundred and thirty thousand? So really what you're saying is, is that by the time it's all developed and everything, you're going to have four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail space. Is that right?
I believe so.
Yes.
Which could be a combination of five or it could be a combination of ten as far as that goes, but it still falls within the same, so that way the parking, everything else proportionally falls into place.
Mm-hmm.
Got you.
And, and that's the thing about a plan development, we use it as a tool, location-specific. Some areas, we need to focus more on one aspect than another, like the SUP, you know, normally the SUP in office is, uh, to protect it from the residential areas. In this situation, it was protecting it from an adjacent office, but rightfully so because it was, it was a use that's not really office, it's more in a neighborhood service retail. So it afforded us the opportunity, and so that's what, you know, and I guess if, if there's concern about what we, what we have and what we haven't included, I would be looking for direction from the, from the commission as far as what area is of concern that we need to, to include in this, what protection or, or what concern.
Well, it'd be the same basically as a mall. I mean, you're not going to say who can go in and out of the mall, it's just, just whatever fits in that criteria inside the mall.
Mm-hmm, and, and we really tried to craft the PD to where it really mimics what's across the street with what the Target has, and, and Frankie can talk about this, when we redid our landscape regulations, that came in before that, we went out there and counted all the landscaping at Target and kind of reverse engineered our ordinance to kind of reflect that as a look that we wanted for our community. We've done the same thing with this PD, we've tried to make everything, there's some things that we went a little more because we, you know, we're several years down the road and we know that our community's asking for more concessions, you know, with the pedestrian access. Um, the question about the drainage, you know, that that pond looks a little small, we've, we've not engineered it. So they'll have to engineer it, and it may be bigger, it may be smaller, it is going to be a retention pond and not a detention, and what the, the difference there is, it's going to hold water and look like a water feature and not be a dry lake bed. And we, and we did that because we want it to not take away from the development, we want it to be an attractive feature, especially that it's going to be right there on that corner, you know, major entryway into this area, that's really the best location for it because if you know the drainage for that area, it goes right into the creek there that goes into the channel underneath the parking lot at Walmart, so.
This, this might be, uh, unusual question, but on one-point-oh, in the packet, nowhere does it refer to a grocery store or a sporting goods store of, of the uses.
Yeah, and it, they have that use, it's called retail stores and shops other than listed, and grocery store and, um, a retail store such as the one mentioned before, um, is classified under retail stores and shops other than listed. That's always been like...
In our use, use table and schedule, we don't get into that specific of detail. We, we look at all retail type uses as one category, we don't break them down into, you know, athletic retail, grocery store retail.
Yeah.
You know, it's just retail across the board.
Of the, of the, the one-point-oh on the permitted uses?
Mm-hmm.
Can staff tell us anything that was exempted, that was not on this list, say this project was going to go into Frisco or to some other area? Of these thirty-two classifications, how many more are there?
There, there's quite a few more, um, I, I, not off the top of my head, but gas station would be one, a gas station, convenience store is not listed on here, um, that is allowed in general retail.
They do have the fueling station, don't they?
But number four is showing...
They have a fueling station.
There's a gas pipeline.
Yeah, they have a gas station.
Number nine is the gas station.
Number nine is a gas station.
Uh, clarification that number sixteen, what Tim is talking about, laundry or cleaning self-service?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
Laundromat.
Laundromat.
They're just...
I don't think so. I think that's inappropriate.
Okay, Angela, I got one for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to back up, I'm not going to worry about what's going to be there, we've got, it's like a cross street, you can't, as long as they fit the requirement, we have a pet store, we have a, whatever. But I do have one, let's get back to the basis of this property. We talked about setback, we quickly zipped over that on Eastman Road, but I don't see any addressment of setback on Hawkins Parkway.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry, I might have spoken very fast when I talked about...
I guess I'm going to bring that back up again because I drive that quite frequently and that nightmare is never going to get better until we widen it.
Um, for setbacks along Hawkins Parkway, there will be twenty-five feet along Hawkins Parkway and Fourth, uh, for the out parcels, um, same thing, twenty-five feet along Hawkins Parkway, uh, so Hawkins Parkway will have a twenty-five-foot setback.
And I might, staff, if we would have thought about ten years ago or fifteen years ago, we would have corrected the issue of what we have now of the blunt, of our city's problem on Hawkins, right? Where it's just a quagmire that, that, it's, it's an, it's a, it's a nightmare. Don't we wish we could have added a couple lanes there now? We're fixed to give these people the right, we'll never have the opportunity to, to, to work that. If we, I'm asking you, is that something you and us, have we thought about that quagmire that none of us want to talk about, but that traffic's never going to get any better? And we're giving them the go-ahead to give all you guys twenty-five foot, I'm going to push it to the edge of my property because I'm going to maximize if I'm SDI, I don't blame them, but have we discussed that? Has staff and anybody else brought up this road problem incorporated with this?
I mean, it's been, the, the, a TIA has been discussed and has been looked at by our city engineer, um, a twenty-five-foot setback, I think staff, we just, you know, a twenty-five-foot set, foot setback is a typical general retail setback, um, and it's a typical setback, um, in most zoning districts. Um, and so we just kind of looked at it that way. I know that our city engineer has looked at, um, at, at Hawkins Parkway and looked at our TIA, um, they're just kind of in discussions right now as far as, um, what needs to be done with Hawkins.
Now, like me, if we make this decision, their job just got a little bit more difficult without us putting some meat into that to help, I don't know.
Well, is that same footback all the way up Grand Hilton Hotel, isn't it? Same foot, same setback from there going down to Eastman Road?
I, I don't remember, I think they're, um, I think the Hilton Garden Inn, their setback, I'm not sure what their setback at it is because it was a planned development, but I think it might have been a little larger because they've got some parking along the front, Tim, right there.
Right, I'm, I'm saying, that's minimum, but I mean, they're going to be way, they're probably close to fifty there.
Yeah, typical general retail setback, and, and general retail zoning is twenty-five feet, so.
I know this is not set in stone, but you show parking along Hawkins there, and if you can't get parking in twenty-five feet with, with the driveway behind it?
Mm-hmm.
That parking would have to be somewhere else.
Yeah, and they could go lar, they could go larger in setback, they just couldn't be any smaller than twenty-five feet, and that's for the building, so they could have parking within that setback.
As long as we're talking about setbacks and parking and access, um, I, I have to voice my concern about all of the access on it to and from two fifty-nine, unless we really enforce some major speed laws in that area and some signaling. It's kind of scary.
Yeah, and to kind of talk about that just a little bit, if you notice the access is controlled, all of the access points are right in, right out, with the exception of this main one, and it's projected that this will probably be a signalized intersection. Um, it all depends on, uh, the, the traffic impact analysis and what the actual mix of uses is and so forth, they'll have to do trip generations and everything, but it is, uh, that is a potential signalized intersection.
Well, too, he's, this one where fourth comes in was this one right here, is what he's talking about. So are we expecting a signal at Fourth and two fifty-nine also?
Yes, there's a signal proposed at that location.
So there's one there, and there's going to be another one, and then there's going to be the one at Hawkins that's already there.
Correct, they'll be between Fourth Street and Hawkins, there'll be three signals total.
Until they put a future Eastman in there or island along there like they did on Loop.
Well, and, and if we're looking at access management on the front end, which we are, because if you look at spacing, um, you know, you, you have these that are lined up with each other, and then you've got proper offset distance between these two, and these are all right in, right out, we're controlling the access and that's to help prevent the need for those raised medians. Loop two-eighty-one doesn't have that, so the raised medians were kind of the answer to that.
Is there any ingress and egress off of Hawkins, or I'm trying to figure out, is that an opening onto Hawkins?
There is one shown, and how that will function is to be determined with an approved TIA, whether that would be a full access or a right-in, right-out. Additionally, um, and, and if, if y'all want to, you know, make recommendations to increase the setback there, that's something that, that we can do, um, you know, depending on this, the TIA, they may have to do like a little D cell lane here to get people off of Hawkins to get to turn, that's all to be determined, so that could, some of those things could impact the setbacks as well, too, but if y'all would feel more comfortable increasing that distance from twenty-five to, you know, forty, what have you, you know, that certainly can be a condition, a recommendation of this board.
Or we could make the recommendation that before that decision is made, we have the opportunity, they'd have to come and ask for that discussion to be had. I mean, could we throw, I'm, instead of making a definitive, could we not be asked for that approval, disapproval, some more conversation before it was set in stone, I know y'all are sort of stuck, this can continue for hours, but...
Sure.
But that creating a, a nightmare here, could we not at least leave some protection for the, for us, making the right decision to the next step, as the city council's got to make it, but if, if, if I'm reading this, I'm still not settled with plan development, that we're, is it a cart launch?
No.
That's what I'm looking for, where's, where's the meat that's going to protect us that we made, that we're going to do our purpose for the citizens? How are we protecting them? And I've got, you've got to look me in the eye and tell me that this plan development does give us some meat and some strength, that we're all excited about it, but we don't want to just throw it up there.
Sure.
We want it to work, and if there was a setback issue, there was a parking issue, there was an egress, ingress, then we can continue, if you could give us the right verbiage to say.
Um, as far as the setback issue, I would recommend that we come up with a definitive number, uh, because that way we know what direction, what you're trying to prohibit or what you're trying to protect. Just to say we want to see it again, you know, I, I mean, like I said, the whole purpose of a PD is to provide a, a level of protection. If I understand what we're trying to protect a little better, I, I can tell you the best way to do that, and, and I, and I, this is just my opinion, but I think if we give them a definitive number moving forward, that way whoever the potential developer is, they know upfront what our expectation is, and, you know, that's with our standard zoning, you know, it's hard for me to paint a picture of what the development's going to look like by handing you our zoning code because it's...
Right.
A lot of flexibility. What we've tried to do is narrow that down with the parameters and try to paint a picture, this is that picture that we've tried to paint, it's not going to be the exact picture, we've tried to allow some flexibility in there because we want to, if it's not this developer, if it's another developer, we want them to kind of know what they're coming into instead of saying, well, come by the property, but you got to come ask for permission and tell us everything that you're going to do. We're trying to tell them, here's what the citizens expect here because, you know, we, we are the property owner at this point, so, you know, it is a little different animal, we're trying to, we're trying to paint the picture and, and have the protection, but we're also trying to be a little bit flexible as well.
Can I ask you this? Can we carry this discussion to our next meeting?
We certainly can do anything that you want to, I...
I'm saying, I don't know, to make sure I'm correcting my request, is that, I'm not asking to table it, I'm asking to carry it to our next P and Z meeting. I'm saying, I don't know, to make sure I'm correcting my request, is that, I'm not asking to table it, I'm asking to carry it to our next PNC meeting.
If you do that, I would ask what the purpose would be, so that if it's, if you need more information, we can get it for you. If it's that you're, you know, if you're unsure or what have you, that way we can provide the information. Because we certainly, um, we wanna move this project forward, because I know, um, part of the multi-party agreements are gonna be depending on whether the developer has a better understanding of what our expectation for this development is before they go and build a park. But we're not trying, it's not really a negotiation either, because it's our property. We're gonna tell them what our expectation is. We're not really negotiating saying, well, you know, can you do this? I mean, you know.
I would like to see a forty-foot setback on, on Hawkins. I think that that's important. I think at Christmas, once we get three lights here dur, during the holidays, there's gonna be a lot of congestion. And, and I think more space on that side is needed. That's what I see. I really think whoever put this together, AWR, did a beautiful job of a si, of a side plan. And I'm sure y'all have been working with them on that, so good job on that. But I do think there are some things maybe that we need to add.
'Cause they've already added more on the south side of Hawkins, already on the, on where Starbucks is. They've already added a turn lane into there, haven't they? They extended it?
Yeah, they've, they've done some improvements there.
Where you gotta write turn lane.
And I'm trying to remember what all they've done more recently.
Because traffic's gonna pick up. I'd say that's my biggest question there, is just simply is there an easement there for-
And, and that's the thing is, you know, at, with the development here, if the TIA requires an additional lane or what have you, they'll have to get over into that, give additional right-of-way, and incorporate that into the, into the project.
'Cause they'll take ta, uh, traffic study and verify that, right?
Correct.
We could have the engineering back to us on that type of process. If we have these type of requests and thought processes, would that, the engineer would do whatever we would, purpose, I presume, in part of this thing. I guess that's my question still.
Well, we have a wonderful opportunity here.
I think we still need to have a public hearing. So if you all will, let me conduct a public hearing, and then we'll come back, give you a little bit, give you a couple minutes to think about it. If you have any additional questions, it's kind of sad which direction you wanna go. All right. We will open up the public hearing on PD sixteen dash oh nine. Anyone present wishing to come and speak in support? Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? There being none, the public hearing is now closed on PD sixteen dash oh nine. Do we have additional questions from the commission?
I, I, I have a question. Ms. Choi, on the picture, number nine says gas station, but on the uses, the thirty-two uses, gas station is not listed.
Yeah, and I think, I, that might just have been an oversight, um, on my part. I'm not real sure. I'm, I'm guessing, I'm thinking that they wanna put a fueling station out there, and they just forgot to list it on the, on the use chart.
And so if that is the case, then it would need to come back before us if it's not one of the permitted uses?
Well, you could make the amendment to allow for the permitted uses, or you could, um, y'all could make the, I mean, if that's what y'all would, I mean, you could make the amendment to add that additional use, or, um,
What was the other one that they were concerned about?
Well, we need to either add it one place or remove it another, so that your paperwork is consistent somewhere.
That's correct. Yeah, exactly.
Because it's on the drawing, it's inclusive.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think I would like a recommendation from staff on that. What do you recommend? How do we handle this?
They're the activists, what they wanna do.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah.
I think, you need to make the, like, Commissioner, like Chairperson Law, uh, Mr. Murphy said, you know, we do need to make it consistent. So we either remove it from the side plan, that use, or we add it to the list of uses.
And what are you doing?
And I, and I think-
What are you doing? Are you adding it?
Yes, and I think, I think the confusion is we don't want a convenience store per se, but we do want the flexibility to have a fueling station. Not your traditional full-blown gas station with convenience, but we do wanna have the ability to have a separate fueling station. Not necessarily self-service, because they may have an attendant, but it's not your traditional, you know.
Similar to what Sands does in Forest Street.
Exactly.
Or similar to what Brokers does already.
So, I think that's where the confusion, because our use says, uh, you know, and that's why we took it out, and so.
Okay, is it one dot thirty-three, or what is it that you're adding under uses?
One dot thirty-three fueling station.
Fueling stations?
Yes.
Okay, you're adding, okay, all right.
And can we also amend it to add a forty-foot setback on Hawkins, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let me back up a little. Once again, we're getting, I'm making, we're making a guess on the number. We need a number wider than what we have. We all, I think there's two of us both on this board that both recognize we need to make that Hawkins Parkway wider. I'm not trained to make the correct decision, because you just said, we haven't even begun that next part, for the engineering to tell us what their thoughts are for Hawkins. Maybe forty foot's good, maybe twenty, you know. That's where I'm troubled. I'm not a professional at fixing the issue. I could fix it real quick, but it'd take a whole lot of money. We don't have it. But we do wanna know for the future, Hawkins is a citizen issue, but I, I hate to throw a number, then we're bound to that number.
But can that be brought back to us as, from the Texas State Highway deal, saying that, that here's what it needs to be, it needs to be thirty-three feet, it needs to be forty-five feet, whatever.
Hawkins is a city maintained, like, property, it's not a state.
But you got the two fifty-nine corner.
Yeah, and, and we have a preliminary traffic impact analysis on this, and I, it, it's not been approved, and if memory serves me correct, there is discussion on whether or not a deceleration lane is required. Is it a center turn lane?
It's a center turn lane.
There are some, there are some things that could impact Hawkins. So, I guess in the chain of events, what would happen is, if additional right-of-way is required as a condition of this, they would have to build those improvements, give us the additional right-of-way to account for that, and then wherever the new right-of-way point is, then they would be twenty-five, forty, whatever, from that point. But to go in here and say they can't build, uh, you know, they need a forty-foot setback so that we can account for a future widening, you know, I, I don't know what a future, you know, if we do any improvements with this, I don't know what we could do in the future. 'Cause if we, if we widen it anymore out here, I don't know that we could widen it again without really creating some issues.
So it would be a lot better to do it one time rather than do it twice.
Well, if you do it one time for a future, then you gotta kind of go down the other way, and I don't know that there's really the ability to do that. That's, that's part of the problem, because there is an eighteen-inch water line out there that is on one side of the road and crosses, and we definitely don't wanna relocate that if we don't have to, and we can't pave over it.
Lot more of the utilities there, too.
Sure.
Or we can approve it, and you can come back for the setback. We can leave it as, you get it except for one item. You gotta come back for your setback.
And just to clarify-
Once you know what you're doing.
Yeah. And just to clarify what Michael was stating, setbacks, we do measure, like he said, from the property line. So, you know, if there was widening, the property line would move, therefore your setback would move to where that new property line is at, and then you would have your setback from that new property line.
Yeah, and, and thinking about how this development might occur, I would imagine that if it proceeds forward, that this is gonna develop pretty quickly over the next three to five years. I think that's quicker than any widening project on Hawkins that's outside of this development's cause. So, if we go in and the TIA says we need a center turn lane because of this development, they go in and do that, and then they come back and we look at what setback do they need, I don't think it's gonna be a, a different question than what we have today. What do we need for ten years down the road or fifteen years down the road?
What TIA stands for?
Traffic impact analysis. So basically-
That's a city-provided road, correct or not? So the TIA will make this study on our city responsible. Hawkins is our, it belongs to the city, correct?
Correct. And so if a developer impacts infrastructure, water, sewer, drainage, roadways, they're responsible for any increase in impact. If there's, if there's not a big enough water line, they have to upsize it. If the roadway's not big enough to handle the new trip generations that they're creating, they have to widen it. And so they would be responsible for, if there's a turn lane that's required, they'll have to do the turn lane. But I think the question that you guys have is beyond what this development's cause is, what need may be in the future, accounting for a future right-of-way. And-
Got a building there.
I don't know if that question changes today or in five years, to be honest with you. I think it, you know, it's, it's either, if we're not comfortable with twenty-five feet, and, and I don't know that twenty-five feet is enough, if, if we're thinking that way, go forty or go fifty, but I don't know that that's gonna change in five or ten years.
Well, my question's relating more to right now, because they've extended it, uh, put turn lanes in at McCann Street and Hawkins. They put extensions in at, uh, Jutson and Hawkins, and they, uh, done it at Eastman and Hawkins. So, you know, growth softly is, is, is heavy there. And so I'm thinking more of the present now, because the future's just a crystal ball. It's just, it's what it is.
And whatever they'll be required today, they'll have to do, and then that will, that will be in addition to this, whatever setback we determine.
Right.
So we won't, we won't say twenty-five feet.
It's gonna be locked in.
So.
And they're not, what we approve here, they can do without coming back. So we're not gonna know. And it'll be none.
I, I would recommend we leave the general parameters alone, and if we wanna tweak the inclusions and exclusions of businesses, that's fine. But, uh, for instance, that, that Hawkins setback, if it, if we leave it at twenty-five, uh, that, that won't let them build it like you see it here. You can't put a row of parking and a driveway behind it. It's gonna have to be forty or forty-five. But if they wanna exclude that, they'll, that had to make that parking up out in front somewhere. That, to me, that, that's a good design, because that puts employees parking in the back or something like that. But I don't think we oughta micromanage the engineering. Let the engineering company do that. I, I do agree, you don't want it too close, you know, you got a big box sitting close to the road. I understand your concern there. But, uh, I don't think your, your, your engineering company's not gonna, not gonna do anything that's gonna be unsightly. I really don't.
What's the standard setback for really large homes?
There's not a standard setback. It depends on the zoning category. So like if you were SF one, it would be about a forty-foot setback. But if you were SF five, uh, you'd be a twenty-five foot setback.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And most of our neighborhoods are SF four, SF three, which is-
Thirty foot setback.
Thirty foot, so. Most of your general retail is twenty-five, commercial is zero. Well, it's, it's measured from the center line, so essentially it's zero. 'Cause your right-of-way accounts for a lot of that, so.
There's another piece of this puzzle I just noticed. Does, do we have any applications or anything to know what's going on between this site and the Fourth Street extension?
Fourth Street, no, sir.
So, and I still go back to my point, that I don't think you're gonna cover four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of roof with that swimming pool. Plus, we've got that additional development that's gonna come through there, so, you know, I see more than just one or two little questions as to far as the viability. I understand where we're trying to go, but you've got all that property that fronts this to the west, um.
Well, and, and, and remember, that is an absolute maximum. That's the maximum that we feel this will support. They probably will not go to that extent, but they'll, they'll have the ability. If the retention area's not large enough, then they'll have to do underground, and that's, a lot of people are doing underground these days, because it's cheaper to do underground and sell the real estate, you know. You know, I'm, I'm trying to look at, I'm trying to hear y'all's concerns and try to figure out a way to, um, kinda ease those concerns, because even if we increase the build, and remember, it's the building setback, so if we increase that to fifty feet, they can still put parking in that area. So if we're concerned about a potential future right-of-way expansion, we would wanna look at it as a true green belt, not just a building setback. We wouldn't, 'cause, for instance, if they, if they built fifty feet, if it was a fifty-feet setback, then they could put parking in that fifty feet. Well, if we come to acquire additional right-of-way in the future, and there's parking there, there's other issues. You know, we're gonna have, we're gonna take away some of their required potential parking, potential fire lanes and things of that nature. So if we're looking at it from a, a standpoint of, of preserving future right-of-way, then I would recommend that we look at it as more of a, a true green belt preservation than just a building setback. And, you know, if, if this wasn't city-owned property, I would caution you against that, 'cause that could be a potential, uh, property rights taking. But this is our property, and we can kind of do whatever we want to with it, so.
And it's currently a park.
Correct.
And I want it to continue to look good.
Sure.
And so that's where I've been going. You hit the nail on the head. I want it to be a green belt, and I'd like it to be wider. And right now, we've got trees there. They're probably gonna change the height.
And, and there is, along that Hawkins side, the, um, the pedestrian path is gonna continue from that north corner down around that retention area. So there is a, a pedestrian path in there, and it's kind of hard to see because of the scale, but it is, it is in there.
I really like the idea of it being a green belt over there.
I do, too.
So make, so the, if I'm hearing, and, and, yeah, so it would be to try to preserve some of the trees that are there, but more or less make that green belt, probably not as big as the one on the north side, 'cause we have a whole lot more right-of-way, but it would be to try to match it a little bit better than what we've done here.
Yes, sir.
So it'd be, and if I'm, what I'm hearing, it'd be a, um,
You could have a little bit of a green belt on the Hawkins side. That way people can walk all the way around that thing.
So what I'm hearing would be, and I'm gonna throw a number, so you, you know, you don't give me dirty looks. So forty-foot building setback, but also in that forty-foot area, no, no parking. It would be just a green belt with the, uh, with the walkway. And then that way, if in the future we needed to acquire additional right-of-way, there's no improvements to worry about.
If we approve that, and they wanted to argue that back, they would have to come back to us and ask for us to agree.
Correct.
Okay. Of that, I'm agreeable, 'cause it does take care of the, and I'm, I'm gonna live here, in, in ten years, in ten years, I, I don't have to knock down a building. Dealing with the green belt is easier to take down, work out a green belt than it is to knock about a building that's that close.
Or parking.
Or parking, either one. So I, I would agree with that recommendation, if the verbiage was, uh, as you just put it, be remembered.
I like it, too.
Mr. Chairman, is that something we're looking for a motion on?
Well, what we'll do is, we'll just, uh, we'll, uh, ask for, if the motion is to amend the building setback along the Hawkins side to, to be a forty-foot building setback, and also within that forty-foot area to be just a, a green belt area with no parking or drive-ais. With the exception of any access that would be allowed there.
So I make a motion-
And to allow that use, the fueling station.
One thirty.
Yeah, let's, let's go-
Adding, uh, one, number thirty-three for a fueling station.
Is that everything that we talked about?
Yes.
Were there any other? I, I think there was like another maybe concern about the uses.
Tell them to take it off?
Well, the uses was the gas station.
Okay.
Yeah, the fueling.
We'll call it one thirty-three.
We'll call it fueling, so that it's not a-
Yeah, grocery stores and, and, uh, and sports are under that ordinance thirty-three oh six. But I also know that you excluded home improvement. Is it under thirty-three oh six?
And if not, I'd like it added. If, if home improvement is not allowed under 3306, I want it added as 134. Home improvement stores.
Yeah, and I think that we, that would be considered under retail other than listed, however
That's the question I'm asking.
However, the outdoor storage or display would be excluded.
Yes.
Because I think the idea, and, and no offense against any one business, that's not the look that we're going for here. That would be an appropriate use probably somewhere else.
So a home improvement store would be more like a Lowe's or a Home Depot, where all the building materials are inside the building?
It's not all inside.
They do have some outdoor areas.
Quite a bit.
But I, and, and I think the whole point of this is that we don't want the outdoor display, this is more of a gathering retail area, more of a lifestyle type deal. It's, yeah, I'm not gonna call it a lifestyle center, because that's a development concept, and that's not what this is probably going to be, but they want to, we want to include elements, because there is gonna be some like open space, gathering areas, potential areas for maybe food trucks and things like that.
And so, Mr. Carpenter, something like a true value, would that be more acceptable to you, a hardware-type store?
I was thinking that, or I was thinking like Restoration Hardware, perfect example. They're gonna classify as home improvement.
Restoration Hardware's a retail store.
Yeah.
Those are, you know, you see Restoration Hardware's in like malls and things like that, they're retail, other than listed.
There's a desire to see 1 dot 1.6 removed from the list.
Is it cafeteria?
No.
1 dot 1.6 laundry or cleaning self-service?
Just take the self-service off.
1.6, 1 dot 1.6.
Oh, 1 dot 1.6.
Take the self-service off.
Agreeable in self-service, I think that would
That way it can be dry cleaners.
Right. But not a lot of that.
Not a lot of that.
We have to
What about the house, house
Which one is that?
Cleaning
I don't know what it means.
Good question.
To be of the customer self-service store or customer cleaning shop, not to exceed the
Really very attractive corner. A retail and other uses in a community that we can be proud of, because it's gonna be highly visible, and we can't not miss this one.
You gained a great part.
Yeah, but I just, I don't want people to forget that this was a, you know
Well, you know, I gotta take exception with 1.12 also. How in the world are you gonna do that and not be outside?
You got 1.2?
1.12.
Greenhouse 1.2.
Generally, a greenhouse is gonna be enclosed, and you're, you're, if it's not in a greenhouse, if it's just the plant nursery, that's gonna be seasonal. So you're generally not gonna have it year-round. And that's one of those kind of things that kind of goes into the lifestyle element, you know, of going to a nursery and having outdoor display of flowers, is a little different than having vehicles displayed for sale, or building materials, or those kind of things.
Like a Bass Pro Shop over in Shreveport, where they got boats around, outside the edge of the building, it would eliminate that.
Correct. They could do it temporarily, but not, not permanently.
But you had a concept drawing when this was sold to the community, concept only, and that research I did was, if that said square box that we don't want to call their name, that they might conceptually want to do that. In the picture, we were given the concept pictures of a Bass Pro Shop, whether it may be, where they do display outside
Sure.
The boat, and it was in that drawing.
I think a lot of, and I'll give you an example, the, the Walmart on Estes has an outdoor area, but it's enclosed, which is different than the 4th Street one that has stuff in the parking lot, and that was something that
Estes does, too.
Do they?
Yeah, they've got plants, and they've got the stuff you put out, bar, all that. They've got two whole parking
Do they, and I haven't been there in a while, but that's more seasonal. But you can kind of see some of the evolution of how they do a lot of their outdoor, and Academy, for example, you know, that's one of the things, like if you look at the Tyler Store, and it's been a while since I've been over there, so they have a lot more of their items inside, that's why they have a bigger store, as opposed to having things outside and on the sidewalk. And I think more of your businesses are going towards having a larger footprint and having that inside, and not, a lot of that's just because they don't have enough room to have it inside. And, you know, me personally, you know, this is a sensitive area, it's a park, and so, you know, yeah, we don't necessarily want those things here, we want it more clean-cut, we want those kind of things inside, we want to be a little more selective.
And we'd like to keep that park feel as much as possible.
Correct.
With the amenities
Without being overly restrictive, I mean, we don't want to say, hey, we don't want this certain type of business, what we're saying is, that's fine, but we want it to have a different feel.
Well, that's kind of what's happened with the mall. I mean, you don't have anyone displaying stuff out in the parking lot, and they put restaurants out in front, and it's made a good attraction for us as well, be that same type deal.
Well, under that type of PD, though, you know it's gonna be there, you know what's gonna happen. You know, we are, we are doing something here, that we're trying to do something with the PD, but we're trying not to do it with the PD. I mean, we're trying to put flexibility into the PD.
Yeah, and the flexibility's not really in the use, it's more in the square footage allowances, and the, and, and not even that, it's just, it's the, the exact footprint, you know, where a, a traditional PD, it's exactly right here, if it moves feet, we're coming back. And, and, and from time and time again, we hear from council, why are we seeing this again? You mean to tell me they're having to bring this back just to add this or move this?
We had one this evening.
Yeah. And now they did increase the square footage and increased the room count, was that the intent of why we wanted the PD there? Not really, but that's a byproduct, and, and they're willing to do that, because we said, this is a sensitive area, we want to make sure that these uses are conducive to the city's investment in the road. And, and, and in that situation, you know, the city did a developer participation agreement to ensure that certain uses went there.
Well, we want to make sure that the hotel doesn't become a two-tiered driving range.
Sure.
And that's what the PD does. We know what's going there. And here, we don't know what's going where, and even what we think, we're not supposed to talk about, so.
Well, and we're trying to paint that picture, and that's why we're asking for direction from the commission, if there's uses that you, that you don't like that are included, let's take them off, and if there's things that you want that are not included, let's put them on. We tried to do our best effort based on what was told to the citizens in the voting process, plus what we think the community has asked us to do as planners for this community. But ultimately, it's up to you and city council to, to say for sure what we're gonna do.
Would Black Bass Pro Shop be considered retail?
Absolutely.
Michael, Angela, is Bob the Builder 1.23. What were your plumbing shop? I mean, that does sort of appeal to me, so I've got to ask the question. Is that Bob the Plumber type of plumbing shop, or are you looking at a showroom experience? Because that would probably already fall under
Under retail.
Under retail.
I would say that would be like a retail, we don't, that is not a defined use in our ordinance, so that would be at the discretion of the city planner, planning director. We do have a use classification for contractor's shop, which is a commercial use, so I think because we have uses that are defined and not, excuse me, defined, that we would use that to say, this is for like a retail showroom.
Then I'd like to strike 1.23. But I would also say, I've got to make this comment, don't take this wrong, I wish you would have given me the opportunity to work on this and give you my thoughts, if not just for me, from the other citizens that I basically represent, just, I'm, he's got me really worked up on this A to Z, and A to Z is it. And I understand we've got to, we're, we're getting awful micromanaging here, I, I agree with Jack, sort of torn, that we have to have, you're telling me I have to have 1.1 to 1.1 whatever before this step goes on, correct? This, this list, Lonnie's got a great point, there is no protection to us for anything if we don't include it right now. Well, right now means, I, I don't want to feel bad two years from now, nor do I want you to feel bad that on this night, that we were here at 7:10, and we did forget, or we wished we would've, would've, could've, should've. And I volunteered the city, because I felt I want to be that responsible person that responds to the citizens.
Sure.
And I gripe and I complain about things that happened in the past. Well, today, I don't want to be one of those that gets gripped to complain about. This is a monumental corner, it's well-needed, it's gonna grow our city, it's got every beautiful concept, let's back up, when they build us a park, when Mr., it gets sold to him, I know this is a big thing, but I still have this gut that I put my life on Longview, I'm standing here tonight, and I don't like the weight that I feel that I'm going 1.1 to 1.32. I don't feel responsible to the people of Longview. I don't mean, I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking this. I just feel like the weight, the weight's on me and us, and I don't feel comfortable, why didn't you think I can hear the phone call tomorrow? Well, you forgot about me, you forgot about me.
Remember, this is, this is, this is also one of two public hearings, so it's not one and done tonight. We still have an opportunity, between now and then, council can make conditions or recommendations, you know, this is just one of the, the opportunities, and, and to say, hey, I don't have the opportunity to, you know, I mean, if, if there's something you're concerned about, I want to hear about it. You know, if there's something that you're uncomfortable, that's what this, that's what this hearing is for.
Well, like 1.21, it says paint shop, now, is that gonna be a value home paint store? Is that gonna be an automotive paint store, shop? It's all for general.
Automotive paint is actually called out specifically in our use chart, and that's not an automotive paint shop.
It would be sales, it would be actually painting cars.
It'd be a sale, sales floor, retail.
I'm gonna make another motion to carry this over. We could be here till midnight, would that not give us the opportunity, each and every one of us, this commission members, to have some more thoughts and process? I presume that would not be wrong for us to have rhetoric with the city, and maybe we could work on getting this tighter and cleaner to the satisfaction of all the board members. I promise you, we could pick this apart for hours. It's too big a decision, I understand time is money, but my city is important to me. I don't know, Jack, give me your thoughts.
I agree with the same token, though, everybody's gonna come back with a list, and how do you compile that list?
And maybe we find a way that we don't have a list that still gives us the meat and protection to protect ourselves.
We can interact with staff and, and feedback to them, so that if we do carry this over to the next meeting, when it comes back, we will have all had an opportunity to give our input to them, you know, I mean, it's not like you won't have had an opportunity at that point to do it, and have a chance to think about it, but, I mean, it's, it's up to the commission.
I think it, it protects both of those, Michael, and I know somebody's gonna be upset, because we delayed it. It's gonna protect you, because you made the list, it's gonna protect me, because I didn't think of what you should or done, both ways, and it gives us, whatever timeframe you want, I don't know, I'd make a motion.
Is there a second? Because we really should have, okay, we got a second, now we can discuss.
And, and we can, you know, I mean, we don't have a timeline tonight unless y'all do, and we can go down the list of our zoning ordinance, and y'all can tell us what you like and don't like.
Or is there a way that you can do it in a more deal, where they have to come back to us to get approval to go into the center?
Generally
Put it as part of the
Okay. In a, in, in, in another sense of a plan development, so if we brought a plan development to you and said, okay, all this red is the exact building footprint that they're gonna do, most of the time, we would say, okay, it's a planned development for retail, so everything that's allowed in retail in our zoning ordinance is allowed. And so, as long as it fits in that, and it looks like that, they can do it. So we tried to go in and kind of pick some of those and take them out, what I'm hearing is y'all want to do that addition, do additional picking?
Adding, picking and adding.
Well
Our discussion right now really should be towards the motion.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't want to, I really don't want to shut down conversation, but the whole point of the motion is, is to allow us the opportunity to have more conversation with staff regarding this, because it is staff, we, this is a city, they're sitting and outside developing, so any of y'all can call these guys, go down, sit down, whatever. But we need What problem does it cause y'all to, to put it off to the meeting?
Well, I think, you know, I would like, in the public realm, in a public hearing, I would like to understand the direction that everybody's feeling that way, you know, because, you know, to try to deal with nine different people on their list, I think is gonna be difficult. And I, and I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's necessarily appropriate. I think what we want to have here is, and when you said add things, we have to be cautious about adding things in a PD, because then you start looking at, if you add too many that are commercial-related, now you're getting outside the realm of what the future land use allows. You can kind of, some things that are transitional, you know, things that are allowed by SUP, you can do that, but as far as, you know, we like this as an opportunity to get direction. If that is to come back with something different, you know, I'd like to hear that tonight. As far as postponing it, pushing it another month, what can that do? I know that, that, that the developers are getting closer to having finalized what the new park is gonna look like, and they're gonna be bringing that to council, and then once council gives the nod of approval on that park, they're gonna be looking at what we've done with the plan development to make sure that they're gonna be willing to build a park based on what we told them we want. And so, we're kind of getting to that crossroad, and so if we push it another month, I don't know, that could, that could push that another month. And I'm not opposed
We have a motion that's been made in second. We've had some discussion here, are, are we prepared to vote?
One more time, what's the motion?
The motion is to carry this item over to next month's meeting, and then we'll pick it up and act on it, just as we're doing there. It'll just be a carryover, not a tabling, but a carryover to next month's meeting. And it's been moved in second.
And what does that gain us? Gets us more comfort level? More time to think about it? Again, gain a comfort level?
If, if we don't have any more questions about it, and everybody's comfortable with it as it is, but that's not what, that's not what the guy who made the motion is saying, I'll let him, I'll let him address.
Since I'm not comfortable with all the criterion of planned development permitted uses. Section 1.0, and I'd like to define further that we could, and if we ever did this, we have just already covered setback, but section I am asking for that for 1.0.
Any more questions? No more questions, call to vote, all those in favor of the motions, I? Hands, please. All those opposed? I vote with the affirmative on it, so we'll carry this matter over to next meeting, this application, okay? All right, what's our next item? Staff update?
All items at city council were approved.
Okay. Any citizen comment?
No citizens.
There, there being none, this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Longview is now adjourned. Thank you.